I'd like to call the board the regular meeting of the Moni Village Board for June 24th. If you would please rise.
For the leaders to the right of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the just world with liberty and justice for all.
Procall please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Holston. Ben Horn.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
And Raisik.
The President.
And at this time, luckily, we have Pastor Hunt with New Hope Church for the application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greetings all of you who are in attendance, Honorable Mayor, trustees, and to those who are in attendance. Would you please bow and pray with me? Eternal God, our Father, Creator of all things, first of all, we give thanks for your infinite grace and endless mercy that has allowed us to gather here today in your holy and divine presence. Oh Lord, we want to take this moment to pray for the leaders of this body. Strengthen the hand of all those assembled so that they can do a mighty work. Keep them mindful of the wonderful responsibility that you have given them as stewards. Bless them with a servant's heart that they may serve with honor as well as compassion. We pray, oh Lord, that you will, that they will keep you in mind as they map out the future of Moni because in your word it says, "Many are the plans in the mind of a man, but it is the purpose of the Lord that will stand." And so, oh Lord, let us commit this agenda to you so that their plans may be established. Now, dear God, as they face the many challenging issues before them, let them know that nothing is too hard for you. So grant each of them the wisdom to reason together and the perseverance to go the second mile with each other so that the impossible may become possible. Help them in all matters to do good, to seek justice, and to correct oppression wherever it rears its ugly head. Now, oh Lord, we ask that you would look with favor on every citizen of Moni. Let your face smile on those involved in this great work for your glory. Encourage every heart as far as every mind, stir up every gift in each of your citizens that they will accomplish what you have set before them on this evening. Now unto him who is able to do exceedingly abundantly all that we ask his thanks, to the only wise one, to the Lord of lords and the King of kings, we humbly ask all these things in the wonderful, mighty, and magnificent name of God. Amen.
Amen.
At this point, we'll proceed to the open to the public, agenda items only. If you'll limit your comments to three minutes, come to the podium and give your name and address, please. No takers. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I want to pull one thing in. It's open with the Village Turk about an old arrangements of June 10.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the item F1 removed, which is the minutes of the regular meeting from June 10.
In motion.
So that's Horn and Raisik. Procall please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there... I believe the adjustment on the minutes was something that can be addressed by, I believe is a correction on the, I believe it's pertaining to you table.
Yeah, I've talked to the Turk about it. He just said I would need to pull it and do it this way.
We want to resubmit it for the next time. We'll just deal with it the next time.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay? It's fine, so we'll just move on to the next item here. Courts report.
If you want me to... The Director of Economic Development notified me that the next regular board meeting, which will be July 8th. State Representative Thaddeus Jones is having a constituent outreach for the Village of Moni. It looks like he may not be here because of obligations in Springfield, but a lot of staff members are. And when's that? At the night of the board meeting?
Is it at the board meeting itself or is it during the day?
It'll be before the meeting, after the meeting.
Yes, they will be here beginning at 5:00 PM for an hour and a half leading up until the board meeting. So if you come to the board meeting, you can come speak to your state representative.
As some of you know, we don't get visits here from our legislators or those representatives routinely, and we have extended the offer to all of our legislative officials, be it county or state or whatever the case may be, that my office is their office if they ever need to hold a constituent meeting or anything else as far as to have a place in the facility because it seems like we're in kind of a insecure portion of at least our legislative districts when it comes to Springfield. We're the kind of southern tip of Chicago districts. And I'm thrilled that they have taken us up on that. I know you've also worked with our state senator also to extend a similar offer. So if you have any questions or concerns regarding legislative affairs in Springfield or in general in that regard, tell your friends and neighbors to come out for that. I'm sure we will.
It's on the village calendar already.
But put a Facebook post or something like that. Other than we gotta do. Okay, thank you. On our mayor's agenda, I don't have anything at this particular time. For the administrative report, Ruben was not able to make it here tonight. Rather serious family health issues, so I told him family first, so just take care of that. Officials report. Mr. Gray with Public Works.
A few things. On Ridgen Avenue, Aridway will start paving tomorrow. They will have the workers out there directing traffic. You can still drive on Ridgen, but they will start paving that. Also, too, our superintendent, Crisell, is having a 9:00 AM meeting with Aridway to get a plan for what is going on with the summer so that it can get on the website and everybody's aware of what is going on. Hopefully, everybody got the letters this weekend in the mail. I know it was sent out that the plan of the summer with the road map was on there. If you did not get it this past weekend, it will be coming in the mail. One other thing, the branch pickup they will have on Friday because of the recent storms that happened over the weekend. If you have everything in the section, the Public Works or someone else will be out there this Friday to get the branches that were torn down past Monday and hopefully not this evening, even though we are supposed to get storms. But that is the plan for Friday to pick up all the debris.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation with trustee Gonzalez.
I was given a couple of things to just remind every... Pardon me. Just a reminder, well, we had our, finally, we were able to have our first kids a movie in the park last Sunday on Father's Day, not weather notwithstanding. And I understand about 75 to 80 people were able to come even on that night. So thanks, thanks, thanks. And this coming Friday at dusk, all the movies start at dusk, is Honey, I Shrunk the Kids. So that one's an oldie but a goodie. Again, the concession stand will be open. There's free popcorn, so come out and enjoy. And I know, I think last night was the first mosquito spraying, so we're getting ahead of that as well. And then there's two big things that Parks and Rec is planning now. Kids' Day is Saturday, July 11th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. Parade is prior to that, though, right?
Yes, 2:00 o'clock lineup at the place.
Yeah, 2:00 o'clock lineup for the parade, but 3:00 to 6:00 are the activities in Fireman's Park. And we got a bunch of new things starting this year as well, and then finishing up that day with Lorax, the movie in the park. And another thing coming up, and please mark your calendars, is Fall Fest this year from September 11th through the 13th. So again, as I've been, you know, touting for the last two years, we can't do anything without our wonderful volunteers. So if you can spare a few hours on July 11th to help out with Kids' Day and/or the weekend of September 11th through 13th, we'd love to have you. End of the report.
And trustee Horn with Finance, and I'm hoping he's going to have Honey, I Shrunk the Kids. No, just kidding.
So ladies and gentlemen, would you please get your budget out here? And if you have had a chance to peruse it, even if you haven't had a chance to peruse it, if you have any questions on this, Darrell, I think you might want to...
Darrell, do you have a few extra copies for like the attorney? Or Michelle, can you grab a copy? I don't know if you brought a few. Hey Doug, what?
What?
That's fine. Doug, if we could, let's go into the rest of the items and the other officials and we'll go back to that. So Darrell can get some extra copies. You have anything else to say to the budget right now, Doug?
Yeah.
Next, we have Business Development with trustee Holston.
Yes, sir. Couple of things. We have been notified that our Enterprise Zone application has passed the first stage of evaluation. Congratulations to Mr. Daley and to you for the hard work you and the administration have done. The next step is the final determination by the Enterprise Zone Board, which should be by September 30th. This is something that we're doing with Ridgen Park, Mattson Park, Forest, and University Park for the Enterprise Zone. Making advantage of this is building materials for new developments within the zone can be purchased free of sales tax. Mr. Daley has continued to be involved with Chicago Southland Economic Development Corporation. Will make a site note on this. I believe it was just publicly announced that you have been elected Treasurer of the Chicago Southland Mayor's Association, Zachary, which I think is a good thing for the village in that regard as well. Will County C D quarterly meeting is tomorrow, and Kevin will be attending that. He also has advised that he's planning on registering us for the Chicago Deal-Making Seminar in Sep...
October?
October. In October here in Chicago. That is a budgeted item, will cost less than $1,000. So I think that's a good idea. We're going to be partnering with that with several other villages like we did when we went to Las Vegas. This is just substantially less expensive and gives us the opportunity to take advantage of locality to attend a show and participate in marketing the Village of Moni. And I'm starting to hear a lot of things actually from people that are hearing the radio announcements, so I think that's probably a good thing this week. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Pop with Building Services and Code and Portion.
Building.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety, please. Trustee Raisik, no requirements, right?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one other item.
Sure.
Before we go to the budget. This was given to me. There is this Friday, a Governor State Community Forum. The topic is the state budget and its impact on the Chicago Southland region, community response. This is open to anyone in the Southland, residents, business and community leaders and students. It is this Friday from 9:00 to 1:30 AM. They're going to have a roster of people with a panel discussion talking about the challenges of the state budget. So if you're interested in that afterward, you can talk to me. You can also call the Village Hall. I think Mr. Daley will have information on that.
True, we can post them in the board order online as well. So thank you.
That's from 9:00 to 1:00, 9:00 AM to 1:30?
I think it's the same time as the...
There's something else on there.
Yeah, something that you see is at the same time as that. Do any of the trustees not have a copy or are you guys going to share? You guys okay? Norby, you have a copy, right? Darrell, you may not want to go too far. We'll go back to trustee Horn with Finance on the budget review. I'm not sure if you want to defer staff to kind of help.
Yeah, I really don't have any other comments. It's out here for your proposal and comments, so if you have anything. Now, Darrell's been intimately involved with this, so he could probably introduce some sort of a neck of. Did you want to make any introductory comments in the process?
Well, the general fund, one of the things that we did was to make sure that the general fund was balanced. That was the most important thing to do. For the most part, the budget hasn't changed significantly from last year, so it's generally the same with some small adjustments. If you've had a chance to go through it, I know trustee Gray gave me a call earlier today and we went through some of the questions that you may have had. But if anyone else has any questions, I'd be happy to get more details for you.
Have the trustees had time to review? I know this is like on the, probably the second draft at this point. I believe in the top corner should say second draft.
That's correct, yes. This particular one, I believe, was the draft that we had last Wednesday.
Correct.
Yes.
Is this version two that you have?
Yes.
One of the questions that I had was related, this is a budget, but doesn't show us the cash balance on some of the accounts, specifically the TIP balances.
Yeah, the cash balances are balance sheet items. They're earned on the budget report.
Right, but I would want to see those before I...
Sure, sure. I can get cash balances to you. That's fine.
For a second.
Sure.
That'd be great.
So I think if you provide a copy of that to the board, that'd be good.
In fact, I can get that out tonight. Yeah, I'll wait till tomorrow.
If you're patient with Darrell, I'll get it right before you leave tonight.
If that's what you want, I can do that as well.
I mean, that being said, I thought overall the budget looks pretty good. I think you took a lesson from last year and kind of applied it, so questions, I'll call you about later.
Sure.
Make it questions.
Sure.
I thought the increase you're giving to Baker is way too much. That was it? For the record, that was a joke. A joke for the record.
I'll wait and see if it's in the news here for next week. Or on social media blogs, right?
I think the significant thing that I saw was your budget's $200,000 less than this year. So I think we're taking into account that we're going to have less revenue, and I think that's a good...
That's correct.
We're accused of spending by a lot of people, and the press particularly, and the overall budget is $200,000 less at this point than 2014 looks.
With the revenue, yes. Yes. Which, well, the balanced budget, budget also means there are expenses.
Yeah, it is a balanced budget, however, you know, we're going to have discussions.
Sure.
So what I'd like to do if the board, do you guys have individual questions that you want to address now? Or I'll defer to you. All I know is that we postponed addressing this by the end of April because we wanted to see what was going on in Springfield with the LGDF because that was a preceding portion of the budgeting aspect. Based on everything we're seeing from legislative action and stuff, Darrell's been watching, I've been watching, I know Kevin's been watching it like a hawk as well, all the legislative issues down there. And it seems like we're pretty comfortable with what we budgeted is what we're going to get because the legislators are recognizing the relevance of local governments' proximity to the constituents and their needs. And I don't think that they're going to do anything at this point as much as there have been threats on both sides to do things. I think they're going to work through that particular issue. Something like grants and things like that are probably more in jeopardy, but the way Darrell's written the budget, just because we have something in the budget doesn't mean that it's going to be spent. One of the things we talked about was making sure that if we're, if there's certain line items that we're thinking in these are based on grant revenue that we're hoping to receive, we're going to do things a little differently this year than we've done in the past, and that is those things that are not your routine, your monthly, your daily, your whatever type of expenditures that are just more routine, but those things that are more of a larger expense that are more annual rather than routine. Some of those things, we're probably going to wait until probably the 70 or 80 percent mark. So when we're just past the halfway mark for the year, make sure our revenues are still lining up. So even though we start off with a balanced budget, we want to end the year making sure that we are also ending it with a positive balance, you know, for all these transactions. Because we can have an artificially inflated revenue, which we don't want to do, and then turn out that we spent based on something that wasn't sustainable. So we don't want to do that. And so what we're doing is having a budget that is going to be in check midstream so as to make sure that the revenues are lining up partway through the year before we actually make, for instance, like if we needed a squad car for the police department, that'll be one of those things. We'll wait to make sure that that acquisition takes place until we make sure that the revenues for that department also match, you know, things of that sort. Now, we've already committed for Public Works to get a new truck, but if he has other large expenditures, some of those may have to be deferred, you know, until we make sure our revenues are matching in those areas, too. So even though this is an honest and conservative budget, Darrell, would you, would that be the way you'd describe it?
It's very conservative.
We still want to be gentle in our approach to this because we don't know what's going to happen in Springfield in spite of what we budget. So we'd rather do like we did last year and have enough left over in spite of our budgeting that we're able to put it towards some of the things on our wish list if we need to. So we're not at that point now. We're just trying to make sure we're practicing some diligence and conscientious budgeting here. Yes, sir.
The video gaming revenue, did we have that in the same place last year or did we move that this year?
No, that is one of the things that's been, it's in the same fund. We've put it in a different department, so...
I like where you put it.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. That's nice.
I think with the social bills and the social benefits, if you want to try to mix the two together, it's a way we can...
That's inclusive. We get some benefit out of for the Parks and Recreation.
Mary Jo laughs because I called with the Director of Warm and Fuzzies, so...
That makes you want to go down and just cancel nothing.
So if the board would review this, have any questions, try to work through any of these things, as with this or ordinance, is there anything else? We said before, bring it to the attention of the department head and/or, in this case, the administrator or even the finance director here. Any of your questions you have, by all means, send them to Darrell and/or if they're pertaining to a particular department. Bill, for instance, Public Works, if you want to review some things, obviously, you know, find out the details because each department head is pretty much responsible for their budget. So and you're, one of the things you guys are doing is you're kind of lobbying on behalf of those departments to make sure that they're being accountable and at the same time getting the resources they need to do their job efficiently. So and I am grateful to see that that's the way it's coming through. So if you would, if you have time, if you have any questions or concerns, send them up to Darrell and/or your department heads. Even if they're not your department head, it's not a problem talking to them just because especially when it comes to budget, you know, you may have multiple questions and all that. Get it resolved and then based on those recommendations or concerns of Darren, then hopefully within the next week, if you can get those addressed. I know Darrell's going to be out on vacation, but it'll be accessible by email because he's hypercommitted as we all are. But if you could, make your list of questions and put such, send them to Darrell and hopefully, because we have to pass a budget no later than the end of July. So my goal would be to consolidate all the questions pertaining to this and actually some of the ordinances we were dealing with before as well. If you have any other concerns or questions about those, maybe at the next meeting we can have all this hopefully finalized, based on questions and feedback you're getting from the individuals, and then we'll go from there.
Wouldn't we have to have it posted?
Yes, ma'am. Like the mayor indicated, it's got to be filed with the county by the end of July, but you got to have it posted. You got to have it available for public inspection in case someone wants to take a look at it, and it's got to be published about the public hearing. But like the mayor indicated, it's got to be filed. So you usually want a couple of weeks to work with just to make sure.
So July, is it?
Next meeting, yeah. So July is will be our next meeting. What we could do is, I think what we did last year, what we could do is have all the review and all the comments and all that kind of stuff brought to Darrell during the next week, so by the end of this month, get everything to Darrell. Any questions or suggestions or whatever the nuances may be. Wayne and Michelle, if we can make sure that we get a posting so we meet our deadlines so that we'll post for the public hearing and comment for the following meeting.
22nd.
Which would be the 22nd. So that way we'll meet our deadlines for that. And even though we might have to work through a couple of things, it's not a big deal. Is that a fair way to handle it?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to pre-publish. In fact, our public hearing will be, say, 6:00 on the 22nd?
Yes, sir.
No? Speaking now forever.
Ruben's not here. We have our second open house for Ridge Trail scheduled for the 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Okay, so it's made at 6:30 and it'll fit in whenever it's in. Is that right, Larry?
Yes. Thank you.
You know, one posting for the publication, if that's the case. Fine. Actually, that's probably not a bad way to do this. All right. Under Attorney's Report, I know Larry, you had a barrage of things you're going to do some review on, and we didn't get any changes made to any of those as we talked about because you only had really a couple of days to work on it. So I indicated the clerk's way of receiving, so we just, I'll put it on and we'll put this at the next meeting, but you got some follow-up on any of that or?
Yes, Your Honor, I did. Still, to our last board meeting, I did have the opportunity to talk to the individual who drafted those ordinances for some clarification, and she's under the weather, believe me. But I think we're in fairly good shape on those ordinances. I understand her rationale on some of it. I also understand, I think Heidi brought up, some of those repetitive, but I see where she was coming from. So I think those ordinance are in pretty good shape. Again, she's pretty sick, so I was going to meet with her yesterday, but hopefully early next week. And with respect to the questions brought up by Mr. Pearson, I think those have been resolved. I did talk to Brian Coltman, who's from Mr. Kavanaugh's office, who's counsel for Police Commission, and I think we're on the same page. So overall, there might be some minor changes, but nothing substantial. So should have, hopefully, if you want to pass them at the next board meeting, Your Honor?
They can be presented. And again, if the trustees had any additional questions pertaining to those, by all means, talk to Reuben or whatever, or myself, obviously. I keep deferring to staff, but my phone's always available as well, or, you know, scheduled time, we'll sit down for a cup of coffee or whatever the case may be, we'll work through these things, so.
If there's any changes in, I'd like to see us get a copy of the... Yes, sir.
You will. They'll be posted as part of, whenever they're going to be voted on, they'll be posted as part of that. But it may be next meeting, which would be July 8th, or it may not. It all depends on if any minor changes that need to be made are prepared by the...
If I may, one thing too, as the mayor pointed out at the last meeting, the goal of most of those ordinances was not to increase the fines substantially, but to have most of those hearings take place locally versus in Joliet. Found out there's other villages that have done this for probably the last seven or eight years. It seems to be working in those other villages or cities, I should say. So the goal of most of those ordinances, after talking with council, was to not increase, you know, the amount of tickets or not look for certain people to issue citations, but it was to have the citations be heard locally versus going to Joliet. And there's a reason for that. You have more control, obviously, and there would be more revenue for the village.
As compared to $1 per ticket or what we get right now from some of the, after the courthouse and everything else we do with it?
So just to clarify, revenue, let's say for a fine, not significantly increasing the cost, but revenue going to Moni versus...
Correct.
Joliet or what?
That's a significant difference.
I did...
And it's more latitude as well, as we indicated before.
If I may, I do have another question. Are we going, now, some of these ordinances are being sponsored by myself or Trustee Raisik. The ordinances that are not being sponsored, are those going to be presented as well or are those not going to be on the agenda?
Without a sponsor, they won't go forward.
Okay.
All right. That's all you had, bring it over?
Yes, sir.
Item L, Old Business. I don't believe we have anything specifically listed for that. We have item M, Open to the Public, Non-Intended Items. Please hold your comments for three minutes. Come to the podium, give your name and address, please. Okay. No secrets on Open to the Public. Don't believe we have anything, reason for executive session? And... Action Regarding Executive Session Items, Non, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
It's Alex and Pop, and I'll take a roll call.
Trustee Holston?
Uh, yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hey, Daryl. Daryl, if you would be so kind as to run off some balance sheets. And those are, just to clarify, those are going to be relatively accurate because we still don't have our audited numbers for last year. So the disclaimer might need to be that, whatever, just make sure there's an explanation, footnote on there.